This is Right to Life Radio with John Girardi on Power Talk 96.7 and AM 1400. A production of Right to Life of Central California. And now, here's your host, John Girardi.
It's amazing to me that this news story started on like right after Right to Life Radio aired last week. I think during the day on Saturday Gary Brettafeld tweeted out the news that an agenda item for the Thursday, August 18th city council meeting, that the agenda item was going to be on there for the city of Fresno to provide a $1 million state of California funded pass-through grant to the Planned Parenthood clinic on Fulton Street. Yours Truly has had a pretty dramatic week when it comes to this issue. A lot of writing and public speaking and public addressing and city council meeting and all kinds of craziness. So, we are going to break down this $1 million grant that the Fresno City Council has approved for the Planned Parenthood clinic on Fulton Street here on Right to Life Radio. All right, so let's explain what this is. Joaquin Arambula is the California State Assembly Member who represents South Fresno. He went to the state and got a couple of state grants that were sort of put into a little package and were going to be sent to different nonprofits in the city of Fresno, going to be allocated through the city of Fresno as the pass-through entity to provide these monies to three different nonprofits. Two of which are, seem to be fairly harmless. One of them is a several million dollar grant to create a history, a museum of Latino history. Totally fine thing, nothing very objectionable, all seems very nice stuff. And the city of Fresno is just the pass-through entity. It's not, this is state money passing through the city. And the city council just has to vote to approve it. Well, what Assembly Member Arambula did, much to the mayor's great displeasure, much to Gary Brettafeld's great displeasure, much to my and I'm sure many of your great displeasure, is he tied in with these grants for very nice different nonprofit things, he tied in a $1 million grant to Planned Parenthood and specifically to the Planned Parenthood clinic on Fulton Street in Fresno. So, what is this money going to? Well, we don't seem to have a really detailed breakdown of it. However, we do have a document that Gary Brettafeld shared. This document is, it's the Assembly District Budget Request made by Mr. Arambula, from Dr. Arambula rather, from, Assembly Member Arambula is himself a medical doctor. The district budget request that Arambula made to the California Assembly. The request title is reproductive health for the Central Valley, $1 million. Description: Planned Parenthood Mar Monte Health Center needs a complete redesign for improved efficiency so access to sexual and reproductive health services can be maintained while they expand abortion access in the post-Roe world. Okay, so, they don't make any bones about this. They are expanding their abortion access. And that's what this grant is about. This grant is helping fund their various, fund improvements to the building while they expand abortion access. That's what they're trying to do. Now, we then get into the details of what this money is supposedly going to go to. Renovations include: Upgrading all exam tables to ADA compliant, body size inclusive, upgrading all exam tables to be ADA compliant, I assume is what that means. Upgrade all exam tables to be ADA compliant, body size inclusive, with weight measurement and in-chair phlebotomy. Two, upgrade ultrasound probes to improve access and efficiency. Three, remodel the medical records room to provide office space to accommodate more providers. Now, nothing else is really stated about what this money is for. It has a description, it says the Fulton Health Center in Fresno is one of Planned Parenthood PPAC, I'm not sure what AC is, Planned Parenthood of America, I'm not sure, is PP, one of PPAC's busiest and highest volume health centers providing sexual and reproductive health care, gender-affirming hormone therapy and medication and surgical abortion services. They are preparing to expand access to patients that have few other options in the area. So that's it, that's all they say. So, the things that they want to use this million dollars for, the only things they identify anyway are upgrading exam tables to be ADA compliant, upgrading ultrasound probes, and remodeling a medical records room. Now, I know a thing or two about these costs. I know a little bit about what ADA compliant exam tables cost. We got some at our Obria clinic. They cost a little under $5,000 bucks. We got ultrasound probes over there, those cost about $1,000 bucks a pop. So, if you're upgrading your exam tables, you're getting ultrasound probes, and then you're remodeling your medical records room, what are you doing with the other $800,000 of funding? Planned Parenthood's getting $1 million. And the only things they can talk about, at the most, I feel like, are going to, it's at the most, at the most generous, I think these proposed renovation, these proposed upgrades that they want to have at their clinic, at most it's going to cost $300,000 bucks, at the absolute upper end. So, what are they doing with the other $700,000? Where is this money, what is this money for, where is it going? Is it just going to go into their general operations? Doesn't seem like there are any real restrictions on this money. Straight cash, homie, in the words of Randy Moss. So, they're going to get $1 million. The city of Fresno is going to be the pass-through entity and apparently the way this is structured, it's a package deal, you've got to give a million bucks to Planned Parenthood, and that goes along with the several million dollars for Arte Americas, which is a, seems to be a nice nonprofit that promotes the arts, Arte Americas, excuse me, seems to promote the arts among the Latino community. A $1.5 million grant to a nonprofit called Neighborhood Industries, sounds fine, and then a million dollars to Planned Parenthood. So, it's kind of a package deal, you have to either vote for all three of them or against all three of them. So, this, I think, is something that would make more liberal-leaning council members more willing to vote for all these things. And maybe they think, well, I don't want to be the heartless SOB who voted against, you know, funding for this nonprofit and that nonprofit just because of Planned Parenthood. So, I'm going to vote for it. Now, over the course of this week, Yours Truly was a little bit of a news setter in this regard. I wrote an op-ed piece that was published in the Fresno Bee on Tuesday about how this is a bad use of taxpayer money, the city council should vote against it, this is very vague as far as what this money is actually going to do. I also pointed out that the Planned Parenthood clinic on Fulton Street does not actually offer prenatal care services. Okay, now, and this is, I've got some pushback on this, so let me, let me make my point. Prenatal care services are defined as, that's basically the term of art that refers to the series of prenatal checkups that a pregnant woman has over the course of her pregnancy. This is really very basic healthcare, which is important for detecting any problems during the pregnancy. And when people have, go through the regular course of prenatal care, their odds of having a safe and healthy pregnancy are much, much higher. When you don't have prenatal care, your odds of infant mortality go up, your odds of low infant birth weight go up, your odds of various children's pediatric problems go up, your odds of different kinds of complications for the woman, those go up. It all goes up when you don't have prenatal care. Valley Children's Hospital and St. Agnes Medical Center have both identified a lack of access to prenatal care as one of the key public health challenges in the valley. It's not complicated, basically, Medi-Cal bills poorly for prenatal care services. So, fewer and fewer OB-GYN clinics want to take Medi-Cal patients for prenatal care. When fewer and fewer places want to take Medi-Cal patients for prenatal care, that leads to a very small number of clinics who are absolutely jam-packed with patients. If that's happening, then it gets harder to see a doctor. Your waiting time gets longer and longer and longer. All right? So, that's the, that's the fundamental problem, is that we have a huge number of women in the San Joaquin Valley who are on Medi-Cal. If everybody's on Medi-Cal, and only, if a huge number of people are on Medi-Cal, and only a couple of places want to take women who have Medi-Cal for their prenatal care, it's going to be hard for women to see a doctor. And if you have a big, for a lot of lower-income women, if you have some obstacle to them getting care, like, I can't get in to see a doctor for two or three months, guess what? They're more likely to blow off the appointment, they're less likely to actually go, they're less likely to actually get that care. And that leads to worse and worse health outcomes. So, we're giving $1 million in the midst of all of this problem, all of these problems, and we see it at Obria, that's why we started Obria, by the way, out of Right to Life. The reason we started the Obria clinic was precisely to address this problem. In spite of this being one of the key public health challenges in the valley, we're going to give this Planned Parenthood clinic $1 million, a Planned Parenthood clinic that does not offer prenatal care. They don't have prenatal care services there. If you go to their website, you will see, in fact, I had a Twitter exchange with someone in which I discussed this. If you go to the Fulton Street Planned Parenthood Clinic's website, find this if you go to twitter.com/fresnojohnny, If you look at the, at the page for the Planned Parenthood Clinic on Fulton Street, it has a listing of all the services they provide there. As I believe pretty much any healthcare clinic does, and our Obria Fresno Clinic, we have our listing of our services. And prenatal care is not on there. It specifically says, "Here's what you need to know about getting pregnancy testing and services at this health center. If you choose to continue a pregnancy, we will provide you with a list of resources to help you obtain prenatal care." So, they'll give you a piece of paper. So, to make a long story short, what we're doing here is giving $1 million to a Planned Parenthood clinic, a Planned Parenthood clinic that bills itself as focused on reproductive healthcare, but the one thing they're not going to help you with is if you actually want to reproduce. If you want to not reproduce, oh, they're all over that. You want contraception, you want an IUD, you want contraceptive device, you know, be our guest. You want an abortion, go for it. They'd love to help you not produce, not reproduce. But if you actually want to reproduce, this so-called reproductive healthcare clinic is not going to help you do that. All right, when we return, more details about this, more silliness from the city council meeting about this earlier this week, next, on the John Girardi, excuse me, on Right to Life Radio, on Power Talk 96.7 AM 1400. I love the bumper music for my two radio shows, for Right to Life Radio and for the John Girardi Show. I love the intro bumper music for both shows, but I don't know, if I ever, if I ever started a third radio program for some reason, and I can hear my wife like, like shaking because there's a disturbance in the forest at the idea of me starting another radio show, might get What a Fool Believes, and it might be one of my absolute favorite songs. Right to Life Radio. All right, let's discuss here more about this million dollars that the city of Fresno gave to Planned Parenthood. And let's discuss the, let's discuss some city council politics, shall we? Just so we understand it. This is not a political show, this is, this is a nonprofit-produced show, we don't endorse political candidates, oppose political candidates. We take positions on issues and legislation, but not on persons. We talk about political personalities, though. So, let me just be descriptive here for you about the makeup of the Fresno City Council and the process for this $1 million grant. So, here's the basic process. The city council votes on, has voted to give this money to Planned Parenthood. The mayor can and has said that he will veto it. However, there are seven members of the city council. If five of them vote to overturn the mayor's veto, then it is overturned and the money will go. Okay? So, that's the, that's the upcoming next few weeks is dealing with, the mayor is going to veto this, and then the council will vote again on whether or not to override the mayor's veto in order to give this money to Planned Parenthood. So, that is, that is what's coming up over the course of the next few weeks. Now, let's understand the political makeup of the players on the Fresno City Council. There are four, you know, I'm painting a bit with a broad brush, but there are four members of the city council who are pretty solidly liberal. Tyler Maxwell, Esmeralda Soria, Miguel Arias, and the council president, Nelson Asparza. Which council president just means that they're sort of the first among equals, they, you know, hit the gavel during council meetings, so it's not like a special elected position or anything. Who is the council president sort of shifts from person to person every year. So, Nelson Asparza is the council president. Okay, so you have those four very liberal people, or more liberal people. You have Gary Brettafeld, who's the only registered Republican on the Fresno City Council who is very, very, very conservative. And then you have two kind of more moderate Democrats, Mike Carbasi and Luis Chavez. So, Carbasi was not at the city council meeting on Thursday, and I believe he is going to just abstain from voting on this, which I kind of appreciate because I think Carbasi is actually himself pro-choice, but I think he's just sort of taken the position that he doesn't think the city should involve itself with the abortion issue one way or another, and frankly, I'll take what I can get. Frankly, this would be, if that were the perspective that all the members of the city council took, then we wouldn't be in this mess right now. However, Luis Chavez was the other person that I thought could have been maybe the other swing vote. He's been a bit of a more moderate Democrat on other issues, non-social issues, I think mostly, issues that aren't really connected to the abortion issue at all. He is kind of more of a pragmatist than an ideologue. So, I had sort of hoped there was some chance there for him to serve as a swing vote. It turns out he used to work in some capacity for Planned Parenthood. So, he has a very positive opinion about Planned Parenthood, seemingly, and was positively voting for it. I had been sort of afraid that his reasoning for all this was something more along the lines of, eh, you know, I don't want to, the, the real dirty politics with this whole thing was that Joaquin Arambula tied a vote on, he got this one grant from the state, which was funding Planned Parenthood and two other nice nonprofits. So, basically, if you vote against it, you're voting against all three, if you vote for it, you're voting for all three. So, I thought it might have been a thing that Luis Chavez didn't want to vote no, because he didn't want to deprive funding to these two other nice nonprofits that just happened to have been tied in with Planned Parenthood. Turns out, he was a bit more positive about Planned Parenthood. So, I now wanted, when we return, I'm going to address this issue. Are we going to see more of this? This is a real crossing of the Rubicon kind of moment, I think, for our city's history. A bigger crossing of the Rubicon even than the council resolution that failed to pass last February. We're going to discuss that and what the future holds for the city of Fresno when it comes to abortion. That's next, on Right to Life Radio, right here on Power Talk 96.7 AM 1400. I want to do a plug, a promo for our friends at To Larry King's Right to Life. They have their upcoming banquet, their upcoming banquet on September 8th, I believe that is, yes, Thursday, September 8th, at the Visalia Convention Center. They are going to have Larry Elder speaking at their big annual gala. So, if you are interested, get in touch with them. You can purchase tickets for this event, you can give them a call at 559-732-5000, or visit TKRL. But yes, go to their Making a Difference for Life banquet over at To Larry King's Right to Life, should be a really cool event. It's always, always nice to support our buddies over at To Larry King's Right to Life. Okay. With the city of Fresno voting to give $1 million to Planned Parenthood, I really think a kind of, this is the crossing of the Rubicon in a lot of ways for what is the future of abortion here in Fresno. Now, if you're wondering, what does crossing the Rubicon mean, Johnny? For those of you who need to brush up on your ancient Roman history, Julius Caesar was in charge of a group of legions while serving, I believe, as a consul. He had ambitions to become the dominant military, the dominant politician in Rome in a sort of constitution-breaking fashion. If he left his province where he was allowed to serve as general and march under arms by crossing the Rubicon River, which was the boundary of his plumerium, the line of his power, once he crossed it with his armies, he was no longer serving as a lawful military leader, he was in fact attacking the Roman state. So, that was sort of the point of no return for Julius Caesar to become, to shift from being a legitimate Roman general to being basically attacking the Roman state. And eventually would set himself up as the monarch, the autocrat of the Roman Republic. I think the Rubicon has been crossed for the city of Fresno by this vote today. We are now in the business of paying for abortion in the city of Fresno with our city council saying, not just that we're giving this, but that abortion is a positively good thing that deserves public support. Now, this is a big change, and it's a big change, I think, especially for Luis Chavez. So, six months ago, in February, the city council debated a council resolution. This was a resolution drawn up by Miguel Arias and Esmeralda Soria, who are two of the more liberal members of the city council. And it was a city council resolution to honor abortion rights. To honor abortion rights, to say that the city of Fresno supported abortion rights, to say that the city of Fresno stands for abortion rights, et cetera. And to call on, to call on Congress to defend the right to legal abortion. Let's remember the political climate in February. Back in February, we were not, we were, we knew that the Dobbs decision was coming, a lot of people were pretty sure that Roe would be overturned, no one was certain what, exactly what would happen. And that resolution attempt failed. It failed. Gary Brettafeld rallied opposition to it. The mayor pledged, Mayor Jerry Dyer pledged, that he would veto it if it was passed. And it became clear, most critically, it became clear that Luis Chavez and Mike Carbasi would not support it. So, again, let's understand the power dynamics on the city council. You have the four very liberal members, Nelson Asparza, Miguel Arias, Esmeralda Soria, Tyler Maxwell. You have the two moderate Democrat members of the council, Mike Carbasi and Luis Chavez. And then you have Gary Brettafeld, the lone Republican on the council. So, basically, that council resolution back in February, Arias wound up pulling it. He knew that the mayor would veto it, and he knew that he didn't have the votes to override the mayor's veto. Arias and Soria wound up pulling it, rather, it wasn't just Arias. So, they pulled the item from consideration. And now, let's, but now, let's fast forward six months later. Now, six months along, Luis Chavez is voting not for a resolution to honor abortion, not a piece of paper that's signaling to the world that the city of Fresno likes abortion, that's calling on elected officials to protect abortion. This is a heck of a lot more than waving a flag, this is a million bucks. This is $1 million for an abortion clinic with no restrictions on the money for what it can and can't do. And frankly, even if there were restrictions on the money, money is fungible. If you're giving Planned Parenthood $1 million to do X, it frees up their existing budget to do Y, other stuff they do, like abortion. So, even if, even if there were strings attached to this money saying that you may not use it for abortion services, which there aren't, but even if there were, it would still be funding abortion. And that's precisely what Luis Chavez is doing here. And so, I feel this is the cross, a crossing the Rubicon moment. This is a point of no return, I think, for Chavez, because if you're going to vote for $1 million for Planned Parenthood, and your rationale for voting for it, and his rationale for voting for it was that Planned Parenthood is good and they do good things, if you're going to vote for this, I ask, what is going to stop you from voting for something bigger, for something more? I mean, before, he took the line that, well, the city of Fresno shouldn't involve itself in abortion politics. But now, all of a sudden, he desperately wants us to, to be so involved. He wants us to be involved to the tune of $1 million, even if it is just as a pass-through entity. The city's hands are now, the city's now complicit in this. The city is managing this money, it's passing this money along. So, I think this is a real milestone for our city. I don't know that something like this has ever been done, to directly fund an abortion provider, to directly fund an abortion provider through a vote by the city council. And the reason, one of the main reasons why I think this is a crossing the Rubicon moment is because of the comments by council member Asparza at the end. So, basically, they introduce all the agenda items, the council members do, they allow a long period for, they allowed, earlier this week at the council meeting, they allowed a long period for public comment. And everyone who wanted to speak was allowed to speak for two minutes apiece. I got to speak for two minutes, everyone got to speak for two minutes. And then after all of that, the council members themselves made some comments about this item, and then they voted on it. Nelson Asparza was the last one to comment as the council president, I guess he gets the last word. Mr. Asparza said at the end, "I hope this is the first of many opportunities" to help abortion providers, to help with abortion in that way. I don't have his exact words, I was there, I heard him say it, I can get the exact transcript. So, he is, there he is, he is, he was on the record at the end of this meeting saying, "Yes, I hope this is the first of many such opportunities." So, what are we going to see in the future? Are we going to see more grants? You know, this is, this is a thing with the Fresno City Council that, you know, I talk about this on John Girardi Show and other political contexts, but there are a lot of nonprofit groups, a lot of nonprofit groups, activist groups, call them what you want, that hang around city hall with a handout. And they want city grants to do X, Y, and Z. And basically, they're trying to pitch to the city, "Hey, we can help the city to do X, Y, and Z, why don't you give us a city-funded grant so that we can do whatever?" And a lot of nonprofits do that. Barrios Hunitos gets a lot of money for that. Fresno Building Healthy Communities gets a lot of money for different kinds of contracts like that. All these different groups, the Fresno Economic Opportunities Commission, they get tons of different grants like that. So, is that what's going to happen now, going forward? That Planned Parenthood knows, they have a receptive audience there on the city council in Fresno, before they thought, well, they couldn't even get a non-binding resolution passed, let's not bother. But now they see, now they see, oh, these are five people willing to give us money because they think we are a positive good in the community. So, where will it end? I'm not sure. I think they have, they know they have the, they know they have the muscle now, they know they have five votes, they know they have, they have turned Luis Chavez. And I- And I don't see how Chavez, unless he changes his mind, I don't see how he can rationalize, like, supporting abortion here but not supporting, like, the idea of a resolution for abortion? So I mean, I'm... I don't know how, after voting for this, if the city council once again proposes another council resolution to honor abortion rights, saying that the city of Fresno stands up for abortion rights, I cannot fathom how Luis Chavez wouldn't endorse it. He stayed off of it back in February. I'd have to imagine he's going to vote for it now. He just gave Planned Parenthood $1 million. Of course he's going to support it now. I mean, I would assume, maybe. I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong. I hope I'm wrong. I would love to have the chance to sit down with some of these guys, and guys on the city council, and Ms. Soria. I'd love to sit down with any of them and try to talk through, like, this is what Planned Parenthood does not do. These are the reasons why Planned Parenthood is not helping the situation here in the San Joaquin Valley with prenatal care. Their whole business model is structured to incentivize doing more abortions. Look, it's not rocket science here, guys. The big problem in the San Joaquin Valley is there aren't enough providers that want to take Medi-Cal patients for prenatal care. Planned Parenthood is one of them. They don't take Medi-Cal patients for prenatal care. They don't take anyone for prenatal care. They'll farm them out. So if every clinic in town is sending their Medi-Cal patients away for their prenatal care, then the very few clinics that take Medi-Cal patients for prenatal care, they get super jam-packed, and it takes months and months for you to see a doctor. And if it takes months and months for you to see a doctor, you just won't see one, probably. You're more likely not to see one. And why would Planned Parenthood... Why would Planned Parenthood want to emphasize prenatal care? Because that's the thing. Look at their business model. Look at how they make money. Look at the services they provide and what bills well and what doesn't. You know what bills really well is abortions. You know what doesn't bill really well? What doesn't bill really well is prenatal care. It takes a lot of doctor time. It takes a lot of doctor effort. It takes an exam room. So, giving them money is just exacerbating the problems we have with public health. Because guess what? If you can't get prenatal care, and you're iffy about the pregnancy anyway, guess what sounds like a more appealing option? It's not rocket science, folks. It's abortion. We'll be back with more on this right after the break, here on Right to Life Radio on PowerTalk. Alright, I want to break down from earlier this week, the Fresno City Council meeting, at which the city council voted 5 to 1 to be the pass-through entity to provide $1 million to Planned Parenthood, to the Planned Parenthood Clinic on Fulton Street. I wanted to pop some of the various sort of sloganeering balloons that were floated during that city council meeting. There were a whole bunch of people giving public comment testimony during it, and basically every... I heard, I think, every single Planned Parenthood slogan in the book while I was sitting there during the several hours of public commentary. So, let's talk about a few of these. First, the old canard. This old chestnut was trotted out. That was like several different metaphors I used there. A canard, I think is like... I think that's a French word for a duck. This chestnut, and then it was trotted out. So that was three different metaphors there. So, the 3% statistic, that abortion is only 3% of what Planned Parenthood does. This is the biggest hunk of you-know-what on the face of the earth. Okay? Basically, what Planned Parenthood does, and the Washington Post themselves debunked this, that it's very misleading. What Planned Parenthood does, let's say you go into Planned Parenthood for an abortion. So they do the abortion, but then they give you a Tylenol, they give you this, they do that, they give you a birth control, they schedule you for this, da-da-da-da. By the time it's done, according to how they count things, your abortion visit, before your abortion visit, the abortion was only one of six services you got from Planned Parenthood that day. Now, obviously, the abortion has a little bit more weight than the Tylenol they gave you afterwards for pain, but in this stat, in the way they count it, they are equivalent. These are two services. You got a Tylenol, and you got an abortion. Okay? So, basically, through that math, the 300,000 abortions that Planned Parenthood does per year is only 3% of all the services they provide. Okay? So, we can see that that is ludicrous and not a accurate... That is not reflective of the reality of what Planned Parenthood does. We also had the old lie that Planned Parenthood does mammograms. This was from Luis Chavez himself, in fact, who purportedly, I guess, used to work in some capacity for Planned Parenthood. Planned Parenthood does no mammograms anywhere. They do not have a single mammogram machine. They do certain kinds of basic breast cancer screening things, like basically just feel for any lumps for you, or show you how to do that. But, no, they do not have mammogram machines. This lie was coined by one Barack Hussein Obama, who may not have been lying about it. I think he might have just been misinformed, or whatever. But nonetheless, that is where the origin of that falsehood is. It was so impressive, actually, throughout the hearing, how the Planned Parenthood representatives were running from abortion. They kept trying to say, "Oh, this money is for cancer screening equipment." Which, they were never specific about what cancer screening equipment they're talking about. I'm thinking they were talking about the ultrasound probes that were mentioned specifically in Assembly Member Arambula's budget allocation request. Which, yeah, I think ultrasound probes possibly, I think, can be used for identifying certain kinds of cervical cancer. But the idea... But again, it was this total retreat where these Planned Parenthood folks felt they needed to run from, that we're not about, just about abortion. We're about all these wonderful services, and all these things. And, yeah, we do some abortions, but just running away from it all. Understand, everybody. Abortion is the single biggest driver of revenue out of all the services that Planned Parenthood does. The whole thing is oriented around providing abortion. If they can't do abortions, they can't survive as a clinic, ironically. If they can't do abortions, they can't survive as a clinic. They have to do abortions. And it's why their providers don't have time, in many cases, to provide prenatal care. Prenatal care takes provider time. It doesn't bill very well. It takes exam room space. So that's why they don't like it. And that's why they... At the Fulton Street Planned Parenthood Clinic, anyway, some Planned Parenthood clinics do have prenatal care, but not the Fulton Street one. So, again, in a community where prenatal care access is the big need, we're going to give $1 million to a reproductive healthcare clinic that does not help you reproduce. If you want to read more about it, go to twitter.com/fresnojohnny. You can read my op-ed from the Fresno Beat earlier this week. Thank you all so much for listening to Right to Life Radio, and we'll see you next time on PowerTalk.